The Development Review Board. I'm going to open the meeting at 6:40. So I just have a few things to read.
Recording in progress.
At the DRB, we hear applications for land development in the town of Bratavuro, and appeals of zoning administrator decisions. Procedurally, the Development Review Board operates on the record. Broadly, this means that we take a clear testimony from the applicant and any interested parties, and then issue a written decision with our findings. Applicants and members of the public should be aware that as we are on the record, this is your opportunity to comment on and provide evidence relating to an application. Applications and written testimony is posted to the town website as received. Hearings may be continued at the board's discretion if materially important documents are received after the submission deadline. In the event our decision is appealed to the environmental court, the court will not take nor consider additional testimony at its hearing, but will look to the evidence from our hearings, the regulations, and determine if the evidence supports the findings and decisions of this board. Only interested persons that participate in this proceeding may appeal a decision made by the board, so I strongly encourage all of you to speak up at this hearing. I'm going to ask everyone to take an oath, please. As we're on the record, we're going to ask that you affirm your testimony will be truthful. So would the applicants and anyone wishing to speak to an application, please affirm the following. I hereby affirm that the evidence I give and the cause under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth under the pains and penalties of perjury. May I do, please?
I do.
I do.
Applicants require a majority vote of the full board to succeed. That is four votes out of seven. If we do not have a full board, as we do not tonight, present to hear your applications, then we will consider a request to continue your application to the next public meeting. After taking testimony, the board will close the public hearing and may vote on your application. The board will issue a written decision within 45 days of the close of the hearing. While we may vote on an application, it is the written decision that controls the timeline for appeal. It should be noted that the town of Bratavuro is a party with an interest in land development applications. The town does not have a special status before this board. Documents provided to the board by the town planning department, town attorney, and other town departments will be considered in exactly the same way as information from the applicant and all other interested parties. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 20?
Make that motion.
All right. Second, keep a second, thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Brian, has this meeting been properly warned?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Do we have any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications?
I have to recuse myself from 2025-102.
Thank you. And we do have no alternate here today, so we do have a quorum. All right. So the first case is 2025-99. If you want to take a seat over here, and you can tell us about your project.
So you can just go over to the table up here.
Diana Butler.
Diana Butler, okay. Tell us about your project.
Yeah, I just bought a brand new home from Home Nation to replace the one that burnt down in April of this year. And I've already hired, got the estimate from the person that's going to be installing it.
Okay, so we noticed some parts of your application package are not present. We don't have any information about the foundation, or the base flood level, and all of that.
Yeah, I'm still waiting to hear back from the guy who's going to be installing the home. He said that he sent the information to you. That's all I know.
It's a very important part of that. In fact, it's the most important part of this piece of your project.
Yeah, but the home's going to be 14 by 52.
That's fine. I don't think we have a problem with that. It's how high it is, and how it's secured.
Yeah, I can give him a call tomorrow and find out what the holdup.
Okay.
Because I know he's really busy trying to get his other projects done before, and he's trying to work me in. And the home hasn't, I don't know when the home's being delivered yet.
So, board, do you have questions for Ms. Butler?
I just want to make sure it's understood by the applicant. It's been communicated that the flood hazard development standards and the forms-
Yes.
-that contain those should be filled out?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm aware that my apartment manager's already told me I have to raise it two feet from, because the other hand wasn't.
I just wanted to make it a little more specific to make sure that I get what's required.
It's my opinion that we should continue this till the next meeting, when you have all the paperwork that we need to see.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to make, can someone-
If I move that we continue it until the next scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Or when more of the required materials arrive?
Yes.
Yes.
It has to be to a date certain, so just do it to next meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, does anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
All right. Jordan?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye, yes.
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, Ms. Butler, we really do need that information before we can make any decisions. So your project, your presentation is going to be continued until the October meeting?
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
I'm just going to get the home set up before winter.
Yeah.
We'll do everything we can to make sure you can do that, and I'll reach out to Justin again. I did try and contact him on Monday, and did contact him the week before and the week before that as well. I presented a couple foundations that he could use, so I'm not sure exactly why he didn't get back to me, but I will call him and make sure I can answer that.
Okay. That sounds good. He's hard to get hold of.
Okay. So you can-
Thank you.
Leave the table.
All right, thank you. So I can go home now?
Yeah.
I'll try and get in touch with you after I manage to talk to him.
Oh, okay. I'm going to call him tomorrow.
Great.
All right. So now we move on to 2025-102. Whoever's going to be speaking to this matter, you can take a seat at the table. Or multiple people can sit there.
Would board members like to enter any observations that they want to be part of the record, based on the site visit?
I can say I was there tonight, and I've been by three other occasions, and did not find any specifically objectionable odors. I will say, I understand that odors are very personal, and everyone has different levels, but I was not offended. Anybody else want to enter anything?
I mean, so is it important that we state observations that we made?
If you think they should be part of the record, yes.
Well, if the other folks don't mention them, then I'll mention them afterwards.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll say that I, on this visit, noticed that certainly from the apartment we were, actually, it's not an apartment.
Workspace.
Workspace. Workspace that we entered, the smells were certainly noticeable, and the window was And it's a close proximity, because it's across a tight avenue.
Okay. Thank you. Tim?
I would say I observed the same. In the alleyway, I didn't notice anything, but once we went up into the workspace, when the window was open, you could smell food cooking.
Yes.
All right, I'll chime in now, too. I'll ditto those, concur with those, and that in Harmony Lot, there's two or three other ventilators at a pretty much equal height, though they're not in an alley.
Right.
There's more space around them, and across from them.
Okay. So we have your names?
My name is Zach Hozid. I'm an attorney representing Paul Levitt, bringing this appeal.
I'm Paul Levitt. I do have other witnesses as well.
That's fine.
I do this whenever orders that the board wants to go, I thought maybe I-
No, you just tell us-
Okay.
Tell us about your appeal.
So I'm just going to give a very brief summary of what the appeal is about, and I'll have the witnesses explain what they've experienced. So I'm glad that the board was able to go do the site visit, experience it for yourself, because odor is the kind of thing that you really have to see, well, not really see, you have to experience it and smell it yourself. So I'm glad people had the opportunity for that. Hopefully, folks have the opportunity to go other times as well. The other thing to keep in mind, though, in terms of use and effect, so the regulation here is about, essentially, it boils down to, is it affecting the use of others? And so I'm going to have folks testify today that are working in the space and hear how it's affected them. And this is really, it's not a situation of trying to punish someone or get retribution because of this, it's just, there's this smell, and it's causing problems. So with that, I will have, actually, Dan Unwin testify first.
So this is where they go today, here?
You can sit here and testify, or-
I can sit here.
Looks like that's how the mics are set up, so yes, let's see.
The over here is fine. Okay. So your name is?
My name, I am Dan Unwin. I own Taylor for Flowers. I'm also building manager for Elliott Maine and Market Block.
Okay. So they have the flowers places right across the alley?
15 Elliott, right under the studio that you guys visited tonight.
Okay.
I've been there 49 years as of today, so I've got a little bit of history here that, you know, in the last year, this is what we've been dealing with, and have tried, Paul has tried to make efforts to rectify the problem, and work with the owner, and has come to no avail. We're beginning to experience residue on the fire escapes, and my concern is that it's a safety issue if the fire escape has to be used. Oily, greasy residue, just, it's not a good thing on a fire escape, especially where it's metal. Today wasn't a bad day odor-wise. Towards the weekends, it's definitely a heavier smell, depending on the weather, which way the wind's blowing, you know. But it is an ongoing situation that we've dealt with, or had to deal with for the last year. I need to open a window to get ventilation through the shop, that, as you saw up in the art studio, lets more smell in, so which do I deal with? The lack of airflow, or the smell? It depends on what day it is, which one I deal with. But it is an ongoing, daily situation that you sit there and go, what's the better thing?
Dan, could you talk a little bit how it's affected your business?
Business-wise, I've had customers that have noticed it very much, and they're tending to call more instead of coming into the shop or coming down into the parking lot. So, you know, again, that is one way or another.
It can smell like a floral shop.
It doesn't smell like a floral shop, you know, it smells like cheeseburgers and fries. A lot of times on days like today, the front door is open, you know, it's good to have the smell of the flowers coming out onto the street, it draws customers in. If I'm battling with the odor from the alleyway, how many people aren't smelling what I'm trying to sell?
And you said that you've been there for over 40 years?
Yeah, 49 today.
Were there any issues of odors before the Snow Republic was operating?
No.
And the other restaurants that we saw, those were there before Snow Republic?
Yes. You know, and generally, they are a distance away, they're not blowing directly at the side of the building. You know, the fried food is definitely a bigger factor. You can see the residue on Madeline's window. Even on Snow Republic's building, you can see where the exhaust fan has discolored the side of his building.
And Dan, you were also the building manager for Mr. Levitt, correct?
Yes, I am.
What do you do generally in that capacity?
Make sure maintenance work is taken care of, new tenants, making sure they get moved in. We had to move a tenant from the spot on the second floor towards the front of the building, to another location in the building, because, again, her clientele was affected, and she couldn't do business in that spot. And it has sat vacant for the last six months.
Yeah. Could you explain how that came to be the tenant that was moved?
She might be up here soon. She should be here soon. She was teaching and wouldn't be able to get here till 7, which I would rather let her explain that to her, because that was her, you know, dealing with her clients and their offense to the smell.
And is that something that you deal with as part of the building manager, moving tenants around, dealing with tenant complaints in the building?
I hear tenant complaints, yes. We'd like to keep that to a minimum.
About how many complaints have you received about the odor from the Snow Republic?
It's generally on my side of the building, so I've got my wife to contend with. Madeline, Mary, who is the skincare that had to be moved. There's nobody on the third floor, and at this stage of game, you know, again, the smell on the third floor is going to be quite strong.
And so the unit where the tenant moved out is currently still vacant?
Still vacant for six months, yes.
I want to talk a little bit about your observations from the site visit. You said, could you talk a little bit more about how today compares to what other days are like?
Today, the smell was definitely less than the average. Talking on a 1 to 10, somewhere in that 3 to 5 range. It's kind of where I felt it was, it wasn't.
Sure. It's a function of, if he has a lot of people-
I need his testimony. You can hear him. Sorry.
Anything else from your perspective, even is relevant from the site visit?
Well, things were cleaned up yesterday. They were being diligent at going out with a bucket of hot water, and pouring it on the bulkhead. Soapy hot water, and scrub brushes, and one thing or another to get the grease and oil off the bulkhead. I've got a video of it, shot from inside the flower shop.
That's a video that we could send to the board if they wanted?
You can embed that into evidence if you want to.
Sure. Enter in the evidence. Do you want us to show it, just send it out?
No, I believe we can look at it later.
Okay.
We believe you.
I got nothing to try and embellish anything, you know, it's straight up.
Does the board have some questions?
I'm sorry, I thought you were done when you started saying that you have nothing, but then you, you had no reason to embellish it.
I just have one other question I was going to ask.
Later.
And have you noticed grease building up on your building?
On the fire escape, I have noticed, and then, you know, I took note tonight of Madeline's window being greasy, you know, that's definitely new from everything else that's happening around.
So this is the fire escape directly across from the vent?
Directly across from the vent. You know, I had somebody go out yesterday on the fire escape and wipe a small section, just to see, because I was concerned about a safety issue. You know, if it gets slippery, what's going to happen if there is a fire, and somebody's going to come off the second or third floor? That's not something they're going to want to have to contend with on a fire escape.
And, does the board, go ahead, Tom.
I do a couple questions. Does the grease that drips on the bulkhead go beyond the bulkhead?
Goes out into the street?
Into the road, into the street?
We do have photos of that as well. I think some were submitted before the hearing. I can, I want to add those to evidence as well, I can send them all after this, too.
Is that what they were cleaning as well, the red?
Yeah.
Okay, so we didn't see that.
Actually, you could see where the water went down the alleyway to Elliott Street.
Anyway, to be honest, I wasn't looking down, so I didn't notice.
Yeah.
And then the other question, I don't know how relevant is, but it's kind of curious, gives a little context. In your 40, or any of your living history in this building, was there a restaurant there before-
No.
-People's Bank, M&amp;T Bank?
No, no.
Okay.
That bank goes back-
Yeah.
Probably 1800s-ish?
So is this ventilator new?
Absolutely. It was new. They've been open a year, as of yesterday. So that ventilator was put in. We had had Romontos at one point look at the space where Blueberry House and Bees Nest was. And at that point, they were told that if they put in a vent system, it had to go to the top of our building, not blowing straight out, even into the parking lot, like the Works and the other restaurant across the way, that they had the vent straight up above the building. And that's kind of why I sat there, I went, what's, what's with this vent blowing right at us, just, you know, feet away? And we never, we never got Romontos as a tenant because of that.
Is that by the state, like, fire and life safety?
I believe so.
The code?
Yeah, it was code that they had to keep, which I was, I was surprised at the time.
Do you have any idea the age of the other ventilators in Harmony Lot? Behind the Works, over by Vermont Table, or whatever it is now?
Vermont Table, you know, there's been a restaurant in, where Vermont Table is, it was the Backside Cafe. We're talking-
I guess not, we don't really know, because it's not-
There's nothing new, there's nothing new. I'm sitting here going, 1980s, maybe?
They had a bakery there in 1.2, right?
Yeah, and there was a deli there in the corner of where the school is now, R&amp;B Deli. Yeah, there was nothing that emitted odor like this.
Comedy Ground Restaurant?
Yeah, yeah, many years ago.
I remember.
You're talking late 70s now.
So anybody else have questions? Anybody have questions today?
Don't forget a question.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Charnman.
Hi.
Mr. Levitt, did you want to testify?
I have one other witness, potentially two if the other one gets here. Madeline.
Madeline Fan.
Fan?
Fan, a fan.
Okay.
Like exhaust fan.
And you have that workspace on that second floor across from the-
Correct.
Yeah. Go ahead.
And I've been there about 18 years, 17 years, and the day after the fan went on, poor Dan got an earful, because I just, my entire studio smelled like french fries, and I had to leave. And subsequently, I went back, and it was, the smell was just overwhelming. So Dan and Paul, you know, asked them to try to do something, and they, I believe that Snow Republic changed out some of their filtering systems, which was a good faith effort. However, this summer has been hot, I haven't been able to open my windows to ventilate, sometimes I use oil paints, and I need to open the windows to ventilate, and it's either, again, like Dan was saying, there's a choice of like, can I push enough air out that I don't feel like the grease is coming in, airborne grease is coming in? I also have archival materials in that space, which I couldn't, you know, having the airborne grease is of great concern. So oftentimes, I'll make time to go to the studio to do work, and I will need to leave. And so, it's, it's an expense that I take on for my work, to have that space to work, to store my artwork, to store the archives of my mother's artwork. And it's, it's, Dan showed me the other space, but it was too much money for me, because immediately I was like, I wrote to Paul, I told Dan, I have to leave. There's no way I can stay here. This is untenable for a workspace. And that the other, the other spaces are empty are a testimony to that, that I don't think anybody would rent those spaces right now. I don't think anybody would rent my space right now.
And there were no issues before the vent was put in, Snow Republic?
No.
What did you do for ventilation in the room before the Snow Republic?
I'd open the window, and sometimes I'd put a box fan in the window, but I'd usually open two windows, so one would blow out, one would blow in. Right now, there's no way that anything coming in is in any way, shape, or form not smelling like french fries.
The board have any questions? How long did you say you've been there?
About 17 years.
Before Paul?
You came with the building?
Yeah, I came with the building. So it was a big deal, I mean, you know, I have a lot of history in that space, and as soon as that fan went in, I asked to move. I was ready to break my lease, but I haven't been able to find a space that is as affordable with good light.
So the fan's not running, like, in the early morning, or something like that?
Yeah, I've got work, I've got other jobs, so I'm not able to always be there when Snow Republic's not open.
No, just, is there a smell when the fan's not running?
Oh, it definitely lingers.
Okay.
It definitely lingers, and I haven't gone there early when the restaurant's not open, but in the afternoon, if I open up the windows, there's a, there's a smell.
Any questions, board? Thank you, Madeline.
She's here. I didn't see her.
All right, so you weren't here when we did the swearing in, so we'll have to swear you in. Okay. So we're going to read this, too. I hereby affirm that the evidence I give and the cause under consideration shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth under the pains and penalties of perjury. I agree? I do, that's fine. I do? Okay. I'll familiar with this. And you are?
Mary Freihoffner.
Okay. All right.
So I moved into 17 Elliott Street in September 2019, with my business-
Can you spell that is in relation to-
Recording in progress.
It's right, it's the closest unit to the back of the restaurant. I'm on the corner, so it was five windows.
Right.
And I'm an esthetician, I do skincare. And so it was a great space for me. It was really perfect, until the smell coming from the restaurant, the new restaurant. I didn't have to open the windows to get the smell at all. It was absolutely permeating through the walls. And I do skincare, so nobody wants to pay for a facial. You know, they wanna smell turmeric and calendula. They don't wanna smell french fries and chicken fingers. And it distinctly smelled like chicken fingers and french fries. I mean, like, very pungent. So I can't say that any of my clients were like, oh, this is awful. They were, they're too, it's too polite of a situation, but I would say, I'm so sorry for the smell. And they would say, oh, it's okay. You know, like, don't worry, it's okay. You know, they were being nice. But it was clear, I mean, there's no way that I could have kept my business there. So I started looking to move. And then, fortunately, Paul said, I do have another unit. And he said, the price is higher than what I usually pay. But he said, I'll reduce it by $100 a month, which was very kind of him. And it still is more than I was paying. I'm now paying $200 more a month than I was paying in the other spot. And I'm a very small business. That makes a difference to me. And so I had to move. It didn't even feel like there was an option. There's just no way.
So you moved out of the new unit?
So I moved out of where I was, 17 Elliot on the corner. And I moved in the same building to deeper, to the far side, north. And there's no smell. There was one day where I was like, oh, my gosh, I smell it. But it's only been one day in six months or something. So that's okay.
And that was six months ago?
It was April 1st that I moved. And I hadn't even started opening the windows yet. It wasn't warm enough. So I just can't even imagine with the windows open, it would be more.
And how long were you in the other unit before that?
Since 2019.
Recording in progress.
Five years. Yeah, myself and Madeline, like, we used to split the electric, like, we shared a unit. So my electricity bill has gone up by $70 a month. My rent's gone up by $140 a month as a result of the smell from a business.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you, Mary.
Well, just to tie back, so Mr. Unland testified that there was a tenant that moved. That was you, correct?
Yeah. I guess I could say just one, I think. As I was coming to this meeting, and I was asking my clients about it, and they were, you know, do you remember the smell? Like, oh, yeah, we remember this, you know. So, because I was asked, like, would your clients even maybe testify? But it's just a polite situation where they're not gonna complain to me as much about it as they actually were feeling. But I knew, they didn't even need to complain to me, because the smell was just so strong.
Good, Mary.
Thanks.
Do you have anybody else, Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Okay.
I bought Market Black Building in 2010. And I've been with, Dan has been managing the building, just like you said. I do everything I can to keep my tenants, and I care about my tenants. So when Walter came into town, and Dan and I were in the alleyway, and he said to me, I want to do the right thing. That's what he said. But I didn't realize his exhaust system would be a problem. So when his exhaust system was a problem, and I got complaints on my tenants, I offered Walter $12,000 to raise his ventilation to the roof, because I'm not a person who goes into litigation, okay? I just wanted to take care of the problem, take care of my tenants. When I see somebody that's in my building for 49 years, or 48 years at that time, and he's miserable, I get upset, okay? I keep my tenants. So another person, Spencer Chris, offered another $5,000 on top of my $12,000. Walter got a $23,000 estimate, which you have, right?
I do have a copy of the estimate. I might show a copy.
And he still refused to do the, to the work. Matter of fact, I got a text from him one day, saying, would you be interested in buying the building, you know, despite my odor? And that's what his humor was. I said, no, I'm not interested in buying it. So I did try to work with Walter to try and get him to raise his ventilation up to the roof line, which to me should be theoretically code if you're frying food. Now, what you smell today, if he's not going full bore, crowded lunch, crowded dinner, he's frying less. If you looked in the restaurant today, there weren't a lot of people in there. So of course, you're gonna get less odor on days when there's no people in there. And you're gonna get more odor when he's going full bore. To me, that there's no filtration system on this system, because you can see the grease dropping out. If you need, I can show you. I have pictures on my iPad of what, what the bulkhead looked like before he cleaned it yesterday, which is, to me, is an admission that there is a problem.
We'll send those photos.
And we have photos and everything we'll send you. I asked him to do the right thing. I want to do the right thing for my tenants. My offer to him is now off the table, because I spent money with Walter French to make a petition up, which you did get, for more than 60 signatures. I don't even know how many signatures you got at that point. And now I'm spending money with Zachary Housen, which is fine. He's a good attorney. But, you know, how much, how much should I be liable for? I was actually willing to pay for somebody to, in their building. I would get no economic benefit other than keeping my tenants happy and being able to rent my space. So by...
Can you just briefly summarize, what are you wanting for a solution here?
I want him to raise it up to the roof. I want him to do the right thing. I don't want my tenants suffering. Okay, a little bit of odor or something like that, okay, people can deal with. But if you go there on a really warm day where the air is still, you can smell it all the way down by my tenant Yalla. I own the building that goes from Yalla all the way around to Herecoming, okay? And Yalla makes no odors, okay? Nobody's ever complained about Yalla, you know. I try and do the right thing for the town. I really do, and I care. Somebody's gotta do the right thing for me and for my tenants.
You gonna question him?
I don't have any further questions.
Annie, board, go ahead.
I have one question. I don't think this was addressed. How many vacancies or persistent vacancies do you have?
I have one vacancy now, and Madeline Fan might be going out. And Dan has been in the building for 49 years. He's miserable. I mean, so why do people have to be miserable? That they can't open up a window and get fresh air into their place? Okay, it's just, it's unconscionable to me that somebody has to live like that. Whether Dan stays there for the next 400 years, because it's at least a thousand years, he can, he can, I want him to be able to have fresh air. All right?
Anybody else have questions?
Just to be clear, complaints, complaints of odors is only since after Snow Republic?
Never before have we had any problem with, with odors or anything like that. I mean, it's never, it's not, there wasn't a restaurant there. I have no problem with, with The Works. I have no problem with Peter Havens across the street. Nobody's ever complained to me before about any other restaurant there. Those restaurants are not frying food like crazy. That's his menu. He's not making rice, he's frying food. And he's, it's an improper system for what he's making, okay?
Thank you. No more questions? Go ahead, Tom.
I have a question. Has anyone looked into the, or contacted anyone at the state level who oversees these things? I'm not, and by no way am I putting off our purview or anything. I'm just asking, as far as the code compliance, the technical, the maintenance of the ventilator, the adequacy of it, if it's conforming with different rules?
Yes, it is conforming. We have talked to the Division of Fire Safety. Two-seater fire safety is a part of our organization, okay? It's a state organization.
Okay. Again, what he's doing is causing me a problem, okay? And that's, that's where we're, that's where we're at. You know what I'm saying? If he was making sushi, he was not using a ventilator for fried food, maybe I would have no problem whatsoever, okay? But he's not doing that. You know, his menu is all fried food and things like that. So it has an impact on us. So the choice is, I'm gonna have a half-empty building eventually, and a piece of real estate that's not worth too much, okay? The other thing is, for me to go to the state, how many dollars do I have to spend with lawyers to be able to go to the state? $100,000, $200,000? I can't do it, okay? That building doesn't spin up that kind of income. Okay? So that's, that's where I'm at. I have a problem. It's a real problem for me, and it's a real problem for my tenants.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levitt. Do we have anyone else wanting to speak to this?
Anybody on remote?
Anybody on Zoom? Okay, Brian, you gonna testify?
Sure. So again, as Nora emphasized, my testimony is no more or less than anybody else's, so they can take it or leave it. So the reason I denied your request for doing an enforcement action is because restaurants are a permitted use in the urban center. The urban center is supposed to have a vibrant mix of different uses. All of these can have impacts. There can be noise impacts, there can be odor impacts. And, you know, we definitely had this type of conflict before, for instance, between live entertainment and people like residences downtown. There's no doubt those were negative impacts. You saw today that there are vents throughout that area. You could have a similar conflict between, for instance, residents in the snow block and Peter Havens. You could have that conflict between The Works and the offices above, and soon-to-be residences above. You know, does that impact give you the right to come in and close down a business? I don't think that's the case. You know, it's not a conditional use. There's an assumption that you are gonna face different impacts in the urban center, and they can be negative. So it's not a question of, is there an impact? It's a question of, it's unreasonable. I didn't see that was unreasonable. However, now, you heard testimony that they stepped up and were willing to actually pay to extend the vent to the roof. So, you know, most of the time, when people have a nuisance, they're not offering to pay to solve it. So my determination is because restaurants are a permitted use, and shouldn't use regulations abusively to close businesses in Bradmore, and take it as it's worth.
Does anybody have questions for Brian?
Brian, in your memo and what you stated here about Patrick Banks of the Division of Fire Safety informing you that the system conforms to code requirements and is in working order, did Patrick Banks inspect the ventilator?
Not sure if it did directly, or if there was another person in his office, but yes, it was inspected.
So I have a question, and you may not know the answer. If the ventilator was extended to the roof, would that solve the problem?
I don't know, but, you know, I think it's kind of a theoretical, yes, it seems like it would improve matters.
It might, yeah.
It seems like the John tree...
The building that the restaurant's in.
The restaurant room.
Restaurant room, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question about Section 324 of the Land Use Regulation. Can you speak to, like, the, the language of that provision seems to suggest that odors are something that can affect other properties. It is in the regs that it's, it can be something that's not prohibited. What are your views on that?
So, I mean, every use has impacts that are predictable and customary. And for a restaurant, cooking odors is inevitable. So if that's an unreasonable impact, then that would not be a permitted use. If there were some level where it would or would not, it might have been allowed as a conditional use. But that's not the case here. And, you know, there are other uses in town that create odor, like wastewater plant, the kill-and-dry, every single restaurant in town. Being in the mixed-use downtown district does not disqualify Section 324 in general, does it? Again, it's whether an impact is customary to use, whether that use is permitted.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Questions?
I do have a few questions of Mr. Dan.
All right.
So, Mr. Dan, you said that, you mentioned closing the business. Could you explain what you're referring to?
Yes. Cooking odor is just a natural side effect of having a restaurant. If they cannot release cooking odors, then that's basically shutting them down. And again, it's not only one business that has a ventilator that's mounted, you know, about 10 feet above ground level. It's four in that immediate neighborhood. And each of those poses similar conflicts. And, you know, odor is aesthetic. And, you know, it's clearly obnoxious to people in there, because they've actually taken material actions to avoid it. That's really telling. But still, odor is just part of living near a restaurant.
So are you saying that if you issue an order violation, that would necessarily shut down the restaurant?
Well, if I issue a notice of violation, they could make physical alterations to the ventilation system, but the restaurant would still be creating odor. So if the odor is just impermissible, then yes, it would shut it down.
So you're saying that if there was a violation saying that they can't get any odor, then it would have to shut down?
Yes. I mean, if the violation is that the particular amount of odor they're creating is unacceptable, then they can move it around, vent it up the reed line instead of into the alley, and it's still the same odor.
Okay, I think that's enough. It's theoretical.
Doesn't matter where the odors go.
Please?
Well, I have a couple just questions up here.
So you can address your questions to us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, one question I have is whether there have been complaints about the other restaurants in the block that have been received?
I don't think there's any relevance here.
Okay.
Do you?
I mean, I've been on the board a few years. I don't recall.
Yeah.
I don't recall any times.
I've been on.
That it's come to this board.
We've never had a odor complaint, appeal of an odor complaint, anyway.
I have no further questions of Mr. Dan or the board. I do a brief statement I'd like to make if for us, for us.
Mr. Unland, do you have something else to say? Come up and say it into the microphone so it gets captured.
I was wondering, of all those old vents that are blowing into the parking lot area, how many of them have a building that's as close as ours is to Snow River? Snow Republic, sorry.
Well, we could say that none of them have that exact configuration.
Actually, Peter Haven's does.
Oh, to the one, yeah, to the snow block behind them, okay.
Further away. No, no, Snow River, Snow Block is right.
Too many snows.
Behind Peter Haven. But all the rest in the parking lot area, there's no...
Not in Harmony Lot.
Yeah, no walls or buildings or anything that are right there. And that's, that's part of the problem is, there's not enough room for airflow to dissipate that smell. And that's, that's part of the problem is, there's not enough room for airflow to dissipate that smell.
One more question of Brian.
Of who?
Brian.
Go ahead.
I think we're still with Brian, right?
Right.
Did you look at 328 or 329? In either of-
I didn't hear your question, I'm sorry.
Section 328 or 329? I'm just curious if it was looked at.
I did review the nuisance standards.
Oh, okay.
328?
It's right under 324, obviously.
Particular matter?
Particular matter?
328 is a particular matter and 329 is flexible toxic hazard.
That's right. But he did, you did look at that and it wasn't all right, all right. So anything else? Any, you wanted to make a conclusion?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
So hopefully, from what you've heard in the testimony today and hopefully what you experienced yourselves, you've noticed that there, Snow Republic is clearly ventilating odors that are being emitted from the building. Those odors are interfering with neighboring businesses and properties to the effect that it's affected how they run their business. What's being asked for today is not to shut them down just in order of saying, yes, this is a problem and let's find a solution to do it. It's really just bringing them to the table to find a solution, which we have a solution. It's, you know, one option is the ventilation, which is just under $24,000 and there's ways to get the funding for that to make it happen. And really, all this comes at, you know, the language of the regulation is not about comparing it to other places, but it is about, you know, as I understand it, is, is there odor coming out? And is it affecting and interfering with reasonable use and enjoyment of neighbors? And that's what the testimony here has shown is, is what's occurring. We're just hoping that this will, will fix the problem. Not looking to shut down any businesses.
All right, thank you. Any else from the board? Okay. I make a motion that we go into deliberative session?
Second.
Okay. Are there all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Just one note that, you know, nobody actually appeared to speak for Snow Republic.
Yes.
So whatever the board's decision, they're not positioned to appeal. I'm sure whatever board's decision, the town would not pursue an appeal either.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, say the last part?
Just that whatever the board's decision, the town will respect that and will not appeal either.
Okay.
In terms of Mr. Vans, the owner of Snow Republic, I assume he's aware of the hearing today, he notices, but I've also been in contact with him as well. So he has noticed today's hearing.
His loss.
He wasn't noticed. I did give him notice and the notice did clearly state that he will lose his opportunity to appeal if he did not enter testimony.
Okay. That's fair enough. So we can stop recording now, please?